Following this meeting number 1,631 to order. And we will have our standing reports. I'll take a motion for the approval of the minutes for meeting 1,630.
Move for the minutes.
Did Kara make it in yet? Did Kara make it in?
She did.
I'm here, thank you.
Yep, yep. Okay, so is there any, are there any changes in the minutes? Bonnie is usually the one who does that. And I think we...
Oh, Dennis thought they were beautiful.
Yeah, okay, so we'll vote. Danil?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jane, yes, I'm going virtual Nancy.
I don't have anything to say on it because I wasn't here for that part of the meeting, so.
Okay, great. And Jeffrey?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
All right, the minutes have been approved. Thank you to the meditator. They're not that easy to follow sometimes. We do not have miscellaneous correspondence. So, and we do not have student representative for a student spotlight that I know of.
Correct.
Nope. And...
There's no public comment.
So, we have no public comments, so we rush forward to the business manager's report who was here in person, which is such a treat.
No, we're not, here she comes.
Okay.
All right, so the first thing I got is the warrant report, so.
I've moved to approve the warrant report.
Thank you, Jeff, a second.
Second.
Is that Nancy said a second?
Yep, second.
So now, any questions? About the warrant? Nobody wants, okay. Well, then, Jeff?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Jane, all right, the warrant has been accepted. And then, let's see, grants and gifts that aren't any, right? And we have a grants procedural manual vote, and I guess we're having a presentation about that. I see some pages in here.
Well, there's not a presentation. But I did tell Nikki that I would help a little bit with this because I just wanted to remind the committee that this is a requirement that has been in place for quite a while, even before I arrived in this district. And I had given Chris Regan, when she was the business manager, the version that I had written and was approved by the auditors in Masbo years ago. And she had already modified it for Southern Berkshire and had it approved way back in like 2017. This is just an update to that manual, so you didn't have to reread it. You didn't have to do anything special. This just, we just wanted to confirm and have you approve the updated version as we went through it and checked to make sure all the account numbers were right and nothing else had changed on the manual. The policy is a different discussion.
Yeah.
Does that help?
That's a thousand. Do you want to point us to anything that might have needed updating? I don't see anything highlighted, but you live links to various things.
I think it was just maybe some account numbers that they changed at the state level, nothing?
Yeah, we updated the program codes, updated years and things like that.
So, nothing material is... Oh, someone has, Jeff has a question.
Jeff?
The agenda packet that was online does not have anything working on that.
Yeah, I thought it was just me and I was just looking for it, but yeah.
So, I'm just gonna say that she told me that it was sent to you a week ago separately, so it wasn't...
I have it in a separate email from Lynette.
Oh, sorry, let me go look, sorry.
All right. That's what she gets for getting it to you early. That's quite complete. There is a row. Yeah.
This is the grants procedure?
Yes.
And what are the material differences?
And what's the date?
There were no material differences. It was just date updates, account updates that might have changed over the years, but there's no substantive differences to the manual that we were all required to put together. I want to say it was 2016. We're just having it reconfirmed with the updated account numbers and date changes, nothing else.
Okay. Move to accept the grants manual?
Thank you, Jeffrey and Danil. Any further questions about it? All right. Jeff?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jane, yes, okay. That takes care of the items under business managers' report unless there is anything that you wanted to add that isn't, wasn't listed.
We just have this change?
Right, it's under policy, but I don't know, Dennis, would you prefer that while Nikki's here, we talk about the policy? Or did you want to talk about the policy that we need to have a...
Well, we, that comes later on.
I understand, so I'm asking, do you want to ask to move it up, so she...
Well, we, so she doesn't have to sit here.
So, what?
So that she doesn't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Oh, okay. I think that'd be great.
I got like a long drive.
Basically, down under 15, there is one policy that we have that is in there in writing that basically deals with the procurement requirements and...
Dennis, I think for procedural purposes, I have to get permission to move it up into this section, so it's...
I move that we move the subcommittee report of policy up to business managers' report area.
Okay. And vote. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Jane, yes, and Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, so now we can legally go forward. Warrant's yours, Dennis.
Well, what, what, what this is all about is EJE is a change that basically has been put in to, you know, that basically was, hasn't gone through by the policy committee meeting.
Right.
But, you know, that's not actually required by us. And this is just basically just actually put this together as part of what was something that needed to be done in terms of...
No, I was waiting for you to finish.
Oh, no, that was it.
Okay, so in that case, the change in the beginning is to make it all purchase of material equipment, all contracts for construction or maintenance will conform to their requirements of the general law.
Yeah, what he did was, he made a change and he was also delicate enough to go out and really look at, this is, this was one of the old policies. That's an old policy we have not updated for X years. As you can see, it goes back to, it was originally adopted in March of 2015.
Right.
And so, he went ahead and put what he thought were the right changes in. And I said, yeah, we'll just go ahead and bring it out of the full committee as it's a valid policy change.
So, just the general law does not deal at all with 35,000, or if it does deal with it, as long as we're following Mass General Law.
It may have in 2015, 2020. Basically, that is the current recommended policies of EJE.
Fine. Yes, I see, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion before we have a vote? All right, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim? Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Jane, all right, so we have adopted a new policy, EJE as of now. And I guess that we could streamline the process and not have to have a policy subcommittee meeting. And then, wait, this has to be done by the end of the month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Very good, all right. Now, we are on to business with district member towns. And I open that up for members of the planning board or of the committee who have questions or comments or, or progress of so-called study. Would you like to say anything about that?
In Sheffield, at the senior center, it was one of the larger meetings. And there was a lot of back and forth in terms of discussion. Lucy made, you know, her overview approach. I was, I have to say, I was really impressed by the fact that the Sheffield people originally, we thought, oh, they're only going to be talking about what it means for taxes. They were very interested in the bigger picture. You know, what does this mean? Why do we need it? What information are we going to have? And some of the people who previously been involved in other iterations brought up, you know, the factors related to building necessity and also mentioned having really good feelings of our district. So, I was pleased to hear my perspective, because I was really pleased to hear about the openness. And it's especially that lineup. But we have, it was clear to me, we have a lot more to do.
What happened? Go ahead.
Can you speak louder, or some people can hear?
The Egremont, did you get to go? It was during the day and I can't write words. You did?
I did, yes.
What'd you say? Yeah.
I thought that our select board had a lot of questions about concrete, how much this is going to cost.
Jim, could you speak up?
I'm going to, you got it.
I thought that our select board was, had a lot of concrete questions about how much it's going to cost, how long it's going to take, what was going to change in personnel policies. I don't know if they were overly satisfied with the answers they got. One of the questions was about the rejection of declining enrollment. It seemed to be there was a, what's the number of already...
65.
65 or...
Probably 3K.
3K.
Yeah.
And that seemed to be the issue, what they're saying. So, they, I don't think that they got the information they were looking for. A couple of times when the company's available, they're asking for information.
Did you have in Egremont, with our select board, there wasn't any discussion? It was only among the select board members. Did you have people speaking?
We had, you know, members of the public asking questions.
And what was the attendance?
I think it was about 10, I was unsure. There were about 10 in the room and I think another 5 or so.
Is there a lot from Sheffield?
No.
Oh, no.
Well, in New Marlboro, I had had a conversation with Tara White right when I knew that we were going to have these and promoting the idea that they should be widely advertised. And my understanding from what Tara said was she was going to widely advertise. So, I stepped back from widely advertising and then the day, two days before, there was no wide advertising that I could find. So, it was put onto Maggie's list maybe a day and a half before the meeting. And so, I don't think I did as good a job as I could have. And Lucy opened up the meeting with a 35-minute introduction, which is very polished and very persuasive because some, to somebody who hasn't been in the discussion, it sounds like we already know it's going to make education better. We already know it's going to save money. We already know the CVTE is, is going to be great. And I interjected at the end that these are projections. We, you know, and we have a study that showed us that it doesn't necessarily improve education. And the smaller school usually suffers, at least in the beginning, and we have to be sensitive to that. The, there was a very, maybe half a dozen, eight people that were there. Almost all of them were very pro because of the CVTE and because of the money saving. So, I've been invited by the chair of the finance committee who couldn't be there to speak to them. And I will, so. And the education subcommittee met yesterday. And there's interesting requests from the project manager for our school district personnel, teachers, administration to put in a fair amount of effort on visioning for what the smooth school district will be like. I made it very clear that their timeline from now until October to get it done was unrealistic and unfair. I didn't say unfair, I said, we have a lot on our plate. The opening of schools is critical. We have projects underway. And I requested that the timeline change. And we will, our project manager seems to think that to be on track, to go to the towns in May, we have to get it done at that time.
What happens if they can't? If they just don't, like they can't, they...
Well, we didn't promise anything to anybody. This, this is a timeline that somebody asked why we have this timeline, that's his explanation. I'm just sharing that with you. So, I believe that we heard from the Sheffield select board that they thought that regional agreement could not be hashed out by this May. And that was an unrealistic timeline, so we will see. I, I would like the school committee to take some sort of a stand here because I was challenged that I don't represent the school committee's point of view. I'm very concerned that our early college, our math initiative, there are other things that Julie has planned, all of our professional development, the time that our superintendent has to participate. I, I don't want to jeopardize what we have going to lease them because you're her boss after all. I think we could weigh in about the amount of time that's reasonable to be spending on this for our staff and adminis, our teachers and administration. So, just want to bring that up for a little bit of discussion, Nancy?
Yeah, I have, I had a couple of questions that have come up in conversation with, actually with people both in New Marlboro and Egremont, actually. And what, the first question had to do with what happens if the building's not approved? They've approved the, they've approved the, they've approved the, the design, but the building has not been approved. And until that is approved and until that, you know, till any, there's anything concrete to work with, there's nothing concrete to work with. So, I think, do you know what the, has there been an answer to that question?
There were, I've heard.
Okay, all right, and then...
Let me just say, Nancy, just to answer that, what, I did ask several questions yesterday because I feel like it's very hard for me to be making recommendations about how to allocate resources or encourage the right people who might be interested in participating to do so if I don't have an idea of how much time you'd be spending on, you know, a committee, what the outcomes will be. And I kept asking questions about what is the priority, being that I have been on building committees and built a high school in the past. I know the timeline somewhat of a feasibility study of the educational plan design. And I could not get an answer, and I asked again for an answer. Finally, about three quarters of the way through the meeting, it was said that the actual process of the design, the educational design, will start on August 1st with the MSBA. That's what I got yesterday, correct? And it would take about 10, was it, it's 270 days, so...
No, I think they were going to get it done in March-ish or...
I can't remember what, I can't actually remember what the, how long that parts, but it doesn't even start until August 1st, so, and then the clock starts ticking, so.
Next August 1st.
No, this August 1st, yeah.
Yeah, but I think the point...
I, I was going to say, I, I, I would like to put it forward that our, what happens if we, is the school, or question, and a third question, what happens if we put it forward as a school committee that there's not, that we're feeling that this is not enough time, especially because there's just not enough concrete, literally concrete evidence that everything is going to go. Because if they, if we approve, if the, sorry, not we, but if the merger is approved and the building isn't, say what?
Yeah. That's, that's a very basic point that I have overlooked, Nancy, and I really regret brought it up.
Do you want to speak to this?
Of course, okay.
Since I got in trouble for a change yesterday.
Yeah. Yeah.
There, I think we're working at so, on so many different paths that are not converging in order to get answers. So, I think Jake and his crew are working with a set of deadlines that are totally driven by, yes, we are getting a new building up there. And yes, it's going to appear on our warrants in May, right? So, going that way. The towns, obviously, you know, are asking, every time they raise more questions, we're faced with the fact there aren't a lot of answers. Like specifically, the questions that were being brought up of what can Peter submit? And is he submitting, because we're getting different answers, for the two high schools together? Or just for the three town high school? Right now, they have money that they have a half million from each of the three towns for what they're doing right now in terms of the initial feasibility. Peter said he's going to, he doesn't have an answer. He's going to push it along as long as he can that he could submit both models. I also asked a question, I mean, we all found that the places that have these massive, compared to us, CVTE programs can draw upon 70,000 to 100,000 students in their greater area could get there within an hour. If the current plan, they're talking about six to eight chapter 74 programs. I said, what is each time you add a complete new program add to the cost? You're working, you're saying it's going to be $100 million school. Well, if, I'm just going to throw, if you're going to put avionics in it, that's going to completely different configuration. If you're talking about personal care, air care, all of that. There are all kinds of strict regulations of what you can install. I didn't get an answer. It's part of this whole period that they're going through now with determining which programs go into the school. Also, we finally got, well, you're only approaching it as CVTE. In our communities, I'll speak to Sheffield and the people I spoke with too, mostly in Egremont, people don't understand the pathways. So, it can be, and Peter said, well, he likes chapter 74. He doesn't have to worry about insurance. It's anybody, kid who's going into a program and they put their head into, you know, a VISA. It's not, Berkshire Hills is not paying millions and millions of dollars. So, what we're faced with is Peter might be happy with more of what we're looking at in terms of pathways. But our eight communities do not understand, even our five do not understand how vibrant the pathways are. I mean, they, every time I bring up things like cybersecurity, just like sort of, you know, gets put on the side, that's a program that's going to give kids credit in college that has a number of different pathways that we've had people succeed. So, my long-winded way of saying, Jane and I had discussed this, has been included, we have to determine what we believe as a school committee. So, one, Jane doesn't get blamed as the sole spokesperson for our district. And then maybe people on the school committee who, you know, totally agree with a chapter 74 only program so they're willing to do it. But right now, we don't really have a statement that says, this is what Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee believes. We don't think this can be shoved ahead for May on the warrants. We don't believe that, you know, we believe strongly in the pathways that we've set up. We have, this is our vision of vote in technical education. And if we don't do that, I, I feel we're, we'll continue to be second-class citizen in this project. And the only real reason, going back to your question, if they have a school, if they don't have a school, we've got some really great brains in our district. So, right now, we're just being asked to give... They don't, they don't get, you know, their high school, doesn't mean they wouldn't have gotten an incredible brain dump, incredible sources from our district. And not to be overly competitive about this, but I don't think we should be giving away anything. I mean, you know what the administration has done with Simon's Rock to put together this incredible, one-of-a-kind, early college high school. We've got also be selling to our communities what we are offering. So, that's a very long-winded way of giving advice.
And I was very nicely interrupted.
Well, I'm done.
I know, I know. And Nancy has her hand up.
The next question then is, since as a school committee, many of us feel like the, that we're not being represented. And there are questions, if we're not being represented necessarily, that our questions are not being answered. Well, two questions that are related to this. The first one being, what happens if we put together a list of school committee questions and present that as the school committee, not as Jane and Bonnie and Beth? That's question one. And then, question number two is, when do we, or do we consider arbitra, not arbitration, what's the other one?
Mediation?
Yeah.
And in Egremont, Lucy said that Great Barrington approves the building or not, though, Jim, I think that's the issue, because Great Barrington is, all they've approved, all they've approved is the design, they haven't, they haven't approved, until they have the cost of it, they haven't approved it, that's. That's not what she said in the meeting, she said that they were going in there, I don't.
But she doesn't know that, and she's offered, she's not Great Barrington, or who's Tonic or Stocker.
And it doesn't matter if she says it, if the voters do what they did the last time.
The last several times, not even the last time.
Yeah, okay, so I, your suggestion of putting together a list of school committee questions, to me, that sounds like a concrete thing that we can put together.
Yeah, we definitely just submit it to, you know, Jake others, and it'll go into frequently asked questions.
Well, I think, yeah, okay, so I.
I still have my list I sent to them, but I never got.
Yeah, okay.
Really?
I think, I think, okay, for the, our next meeting, if you will send me questions that I can collate, and that we can agree upon, that we want to send ahead, I think questions and comments together, because we could have two sections, one is questions, and another, it could be comments or opinions. One of the things that I think is confusing for what the towns and the district feel is because when you go to member towns, there are always some people who speak up very strongly that they want CVTE school, and then it gets translated, oh, New Marrow's very in favor of that, and then I say, well, we have elected members from all the communities, it's my sense that there's a lot of questions, and that we're not quite on board, so it's the, it's the tension between the municipal voices that are being made heard, and where does the school committee fit in, because we were pushed aside from the beginning.
But if we can, we can just put the questions, if we can put the questions, Jane, because I think thing, there, the questions themselves are, if we can just submit, I don't know about what, but if we just submit the questions, whether we submit them to the board, or we submit them to Jake, they get submitted to Jake.
The way Egremont did.
Yeah, but I think that the, I mean, I think that the.
We should submit them, but I don't think that they should disappear into.
That's why I'm saying that, no, they absolutely should not, I mean, I think, but that's where the questions, rather than the, I think that, from my perspective anyway, to have the questions there and just keep pushing and pushing and pushing with the questions, but I think it's.
Can I build on that? What Nancy just?
I just wanna have a motion here, Jeff had something to say, I'm looking for a motion for a commitment to creating this list, so Jeff?
Well, I had a, a comment first, with regards to if there is a published, like a letter to it, I actually think it should be officially sent, maybe even CC lawyers, and it should also be shared through media channels, because if the track record is that they're ignoring letters, make the position very public, so it's in the public record, that's not, people aren't seeking out, but like one that's actually in people's face, and we'll bring it to the public square if the, it's not getting highlighted.
Okay.
I move to create a letter in the next meeting to be shared with the Berkshire Regional School District Planning Board, and requesting response, and having that shared to local media channels.
Second.
Okay, so Jeff and Bonnie, okay, further discussion now, I'm gonna get, let Dennis in here, and then you back.
If I, if I could make a brief comment.
Of course.
I'll, I'll try. Basically, you know, I have constantly been open-minded on this whole issue.
Yeah.
What's happened is, what has never changed since day one in this effort, is the question set that I originally started going through with people in my town, and now, I find that I, I now talk to like everybody in our existing five towns, I, I don't really know anybody of the other, out like three, that make up the eight, so, you know, I haven't really heard from them, but basically, there's one common question, that's 95% the question, which is, is it gonna cost us more money in tax dollars? And, you know, that has not been even brought forth, discussed, or clarified in any fashion, and every time they come and ask me that same question, I say, I don't know. Yeah, which, which one, that makes us look a little bit stupid, you know, that this thing has been going on for, how long, a year and a half?
Well, in these presentations, just to let you know, it's being said that it says between 1.5 and 3-something million dollars a year, this plan.
You know.
That's, based on, we don't know what, but that, they are saying, that's Jake's position.
That's Jake's position.
Yeah.
Okay.
The chairman has the key.
Has, has he given us, can, can we put the press on Jake then, for example, to say, tell us why you believe that?
Yeah, well.
Give us some facts.
Yeah, okay, well, that, that's coming up, so.
Because I'll, I'll just tell you that, that's the constraint.
Yeah.
Throw down in the back of my neck that everybody puts there, is, is it gonna cost us more money?
Yeah.
You know, and that's not just parents, that's basically all the taxpayers, that's what they wanna know.
Okay, Bonnie?
So first, if you look at page 138 of 100 and something pages, Jake does work it out, how he gets to these numbers, you are right, most, most towns, just about every town will be paying more. The way they have configured this in order, and I'm, this is my bias here, in order to get us to join, they have put it, that will be a very minimal cost to our five towns. What they're basically saying is because they pick up about six, six and a half extra points in their application to MSBA, they are, because of us, so if we go along, instead of, let's say, getting 47 million, they get 53 million, they are crediting those millions of dollars to the five towns, all right? That's number one. Number two, yes, the assessment does go up, but it goes up, nobody's worked out what the assessment methodology, and you know what we went through in our five towns, so you have to take the premises upon which Jake operates. Also, remember, he operated in designing all this, that all of our high school classes will be either 20 or 22 students, we don't have that unless you're talking band or FISD, and you don't have that in either, on either campus, nobody operates in either school district with high school classes with that average. His numbers that keep our assessments low only work when you look at the models, and it's on the line, if you go to the school website, you will find the complete report, and you can see the diagrams, or the spreadsheets that show it's based on 20 classes, 20 in a class or 22 in a class. Also, his savings, which I pointed, are working upon high-priced teachers in one model, leaving the districts.
Via attrition.
Yes, via attrition.
So I guess you're gonna sit on each other's lap until you decide your vote.
Okay.
So, but I'd like to piggyback just one thing in terms of what Nancy said.
Can you make it short?
It's a quick one.
Okay.
I think in, you know, the fact that Danil hasn't gotten a response to her questions, I haven't gotten the responses to my five questions that I wrote in quite detail, we may put a deadline, I'd like to put a deadline in terms of Jeff's actions, and then we go to the press. These are the questions that have been asked, I also think we put it in our newsletters, you know, will be coming up soon to our fall newsletters, these are the questions that your townspeople have been asking, people all know that we've been asking this, and lastly, Jeff, why have we still not replaced and authored with the, with our school committee representative? We're entitled, I'm not blaming you, but what's the rationale? I see from your face there is a.
I can't speak for the other members.
We've got one, his name's Charlie.
Okay, I'm gonna take a vote on.
Well, then I'm adding to it, Jane, I think you've gotta put a formal request in that we have that slot filled.
Okay, so we're gonna create a letter to the Regional School District Planning Board, this is a change in the motion, Jeff, with questions and asking for answers by a certain date, and include a query about the replacement of the school committee representative position.
Yeah, we could do that separately, but.
I amend my motion to reflect those changes.
Second.
Okay, very good, getting this down here. All right, so I'm looking for, okay, so let's do a vote, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jane, yes, okay. And because we're referring to the next meeting date, that is my chairman's report is, I'm having difficulty with the August 11th date, and I'm interested in discussing moving it to another date, and in checking with Beth, obviously, you can go ahead without me, I'm just saying, I, I'm not likely to be here for that meeting, and it does, we will be approving the handbook, and, is that the handbook that we'll be at?
My handbooks will be on that date.
And hopefully, we'll be having an executive session about Beth's contract, and.
Do you have suggestions of other dates?
Yeah, so the other dates that Beth said is in that week, the 9th and/or the 10th would be okay. Unfortunately, the 18th, which she also offered, I have a commitment, and then that would be pushing us all the way to the 25th.
So the 18th is not good for you again?
Yeah, so I, I, I don't feel great about this, I mean, on the 18th, I probably look at the timing, but anyway, it's tough. People need to be places.
I can't, I can't, I can't do the, I can't do the 11th, I won't be here, I won't be here that week at all, Maine fiddle camp, yay.
All right, so the 11th would be out for you anyway.
My preference is to keep it that same week, the following week would be difficult to meet.
Okay.
How many people do we need for a court?
So Nancy, you, you're saying you're not available that whole week?
Yeah, so that if we change it to the 9th or 10th, that wouldn't make it any better or worse for you. How about other people, can other people do the 9th or the 10th?
I could do that week if I can zoom in.
Yeah, zoom in as far.
I can't do the 9th, but I can do the 10th.
Okay.
I could do the 9th.
Can you do the 10th? Can you do the 10th?
10th would be a little bit, I guess.
What about the week before, or is that too soon?
No, it's, we need time to get the contract together. Dennis is, if, if we adjusted the time a little bit, would that help you?
It'd have to be, well, yeah, I mean, if we, if we did like a 6:30 on the 10th.
Yeah.
I could do 6:30.
Yeah, and then I'd be happy to offer refreshments from 6:00 to 6:30 for those people who think, and you're early. And gratitude, okay, and gratitude for your willingness to change by a day.
Yeah, I could definitely do the 10th, because I have.
Oh, thank you, I so appreciate it, so we're gonna meet, we're changing, our next meeting is.
Kara, Kara wanted.
Question?
I just wanted to say, I won't be able to attend on the 10th, just to put my, put it, put number in there.
Okay, all right, so we still have eight.
But, but Nancy can't be.
I know, so it would be eight, we have two people who can't come on the 10th. And I don't wanna pretend that I'm more important than you, Kara, I don't wanna belittle your participation.
I don't think.
Okay.
And the following week, there were too many people who were not around, is that what it was?
Yeah, Jeff isn't around, I'm, it's an event that I'm supposed to do stuff at.
We're recording.
But, we're talking the 10th of August.
6:30.
It's gonna be at 6:30, and I'm bringing gratitude refreshments at 6 o'clock. I'll send them to you in the mail.
Yeah.
Refreshments, I'll try to.
Okay.
I'll be in Indiana to make sure of my sister.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, that's wonderful, okay, so I will.
Do we need to approve that?
Uh, do we need a vote?
Nope, Jeff says no, I'm going with Jeff.
I don't think.
The calendar.
Yeah, okay, so we're going to the superintendent's report, I mean, over to Dr. Reg.
Sure, so I got a little wild, once I got going on the superintendent's report, and I sent it to you before, but I'll post it, and I made copies for those who are here, but I emailed it also. Provost Wine Seem is gonna join us today, but realized he had another commitment, so in August, maybe the provost and Mr. Knox will be joining us to talk about early college updates, but there's a lot happening, so, I wanted to point out, and, because we're just incredibly excited about the fact that we were officially awarded $500,000 on Monday, July 18th, for the early college designation.
Yes.
Yes, which is huge, and we also found out at that time that we will be awarded another support grant for the first year of implementation, which last year, we received $150,000, and she didn't wanna tell us the numbers because she's anticipating it will be north of that, so this program is incredibly important, and gonna be about three-quarters of a million dollars for this district and our students and faculty and staff for next year alone, so it's pretty amazing. We are working on a name and a logo for the early college program that we'll be using on all of our materials, and as soon as we make that decision, hopefully next week, we'll be using it on the brochure that we've created, the first of a series of FAQs on, you know, banners and designated spaces for early college and in Mount Everett. We have been working, the early college team, and when I say that, that's a lot of the administration here, as well as that at Simon's Rock, is who I'm referring to when we say early college team, is working to redesign our middle school schedule in a way that promotes accelerated learning in the core content areas of ELA and math, which will prepare students earlier at the middle levels to be ready to engage in early college coursework, and we've also changed the high school schedule by putting the advisory block near the lunches, followed by two periods in the afternoon, which gives a huge window of time to accommodate extended internship opportunities, as well as early college courses, so those are significant changes, and we've been working with the SBREA about the fact that we needed to make these changes to ensure that the implementation process is successful, and, you know, bargaining that impact. We're also, next week, the team is gonna be working to synthesize that data that we've put together. that we've put together for those who participated in our first visioning session. Uh we'll share uh share out uh an initial report and a reminder about our next visioning session and what's gonna be happening, uh which is scheduled for August 24th at 6 o'clock, I believe, here. Um today, when I spoke with John, uh he sent a message saying that he spent some time with two of our students who are participating in the curiosity camp. Uh he was spent a session with them and said that they are happily enjoying their parent experience and um this was a program that where students are engaged um who are residing at Simon's Rock for two weeks to um immerse themselves in what it's like to be a college student and this was also funded by the state because of our partnership. We posted the position of an early college program. It's early college and I missed it. Um internship program coordinator. Uh this position is going to be funded by the grant.
Nice.
Um I put the meeting schedule on there for that, so that's our. Uh the FY23 budget, the conference committee released their final uh recommendations, so I tried to list them out for you. As expected, the foundation budget, they did not choose to move the inflation factor, so we're still at 4.5%, even though inflation is 5.9%. Um the minimum per pupil aid was increased to $60 per student, which gives us an increase of. Yeah, that's don't spend it all at once. Um and uh they they wanted to make it clear that they the hold harmless aid is $30 per student, which is our increase of $19,000. And the additional $19,000 is going to be um somewhere else because they don't want us to to maybe think that we're uh now have to be at $60 a student for in the future. Um the regional transportation reimbursement rate is at 85%. It was at the highest I've ever seen in my career at 96% for FY22, but we're not gonna see that again. Um the free universal student lunch is uh has been funded in their budget. Circuit breaker funding went up $6 million. Um the rural aid funding line went up uh $1.5 million to $5.5 million, which is big and I'll talk about why. Uh and the regionalization grant uh was not funded. Um the 500,000 that we've uh been working with on this project um uh is no longer funded. The, excuse me, the planning board, that that's some of the work that we've been doing. It's not all of it. That that work was funded partially out of that grant and the the state did not fund it. Uh so uh I also uh being a member of the Mars Board of Directors.
Can you say what Mars is for the people who are getting familiar?
The Mass Association of Regional Schools uh had talked about this uh Rural Schools Commission and uh and uh their report that was coming out July of 2022. So I went to it today. If you if you have insomnia or would like to read it, it's 48 pages of joy. Um and uh but they did do quite an extensive study um about uh the issues, the sustainability of of rural school districts in Massachusetts. But um I I hope you will flip through it because it is kind of easy to read and it broke it out. I put the different topics that they made recommendations for in here. I'm not gonna read it all. But there were some very.
Where is it posted?
I I it's you'll see it if you click on on this when I send it to you electronically, it'll go right to the state website where it's posted, so you can read it.
Oh.
Blue, even though it's a blue blank.
Oh, it's blue, the blue line.
You just can't. You can't see it here, but if when you look at it online, just click on that on the one I sent to you in your email and you can you'll go right to it.
Is it also on their site?
It is on their site. If you just put in the world, if you put in, if you put in rural commission report, it comes right up to it. So um but I did put the link there. Um but they did have some some very um important quotes that I highlighted for you in here. Um one that I found particularly interesting, it said, "The cost savings of regionalization alone are unlikely to result in substantial long-term fiscal improvement." Just wanted to throw that out there. Um so there's some, there's some things that you have to read. There's some ideas. I will say that Mars um the the Board of Directors had a very lengthy discussion because people who spent a lot of time on this initiative, working with this, were not necessarily in agreement with the recommendations that actually were printed. Um and they feel that um after all this work, th- there's still more things that disincentivize regionalization than don't, so I think that's also important to note. Um but while I was reading that, I found um in the back that they listed the rural aid distribution and we are getting $350,000, 700, 350, 796 dollars as our distribution draft for 2023. We got 70,000 last year. So that was a little bit of a prize patrol moment today, so I I was very excited about that, as was Nikki as we came in here, so.
Yes, I can't believe it. We still never know the magic formula that comes.
Well, it does talk a little bit about it in in this in your light reading, but there's a chart in the back and uh prior to last year's 70,000, we didn't even qualify.
Right.
So this is, um that was a very exciting uh note, so that's what I have for you tonight.
May I ask questions?
May you ask questions? Sure.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm gonna go Jeff and then Bonnie. Bonnie, if you can think about how to get it a little more concise, that would be great.
No, it's not women my round.
Well.
Some of us would appreciate it, though, with uh sole parent today.
Yes.
It's uh and no babysitters. Um so I that's great news about the grant uh for the um the early college. What is being done to get this messaging out and like in a big way to the community? And I I hope it's a very aggressive way, especially talking about counter messaging. Uh it it, you know, that there's money for early college, not for regionalization right now and you know, from uh grant making bodies, so I'm curious.
I put I put somewhere at or I read it in in my head, so I'm sure you read it there. Um but we uh are going to have an aggressive PR um communications team um information blast. Um we just wanted to wait because this other number should be released any day now and we thought it would be more powerful to um release it with a three quarters of a million versus just a half a million. But um also the logo will be decided in in two days. So with all that together, then there's gonna be quite a a marketing initiative from, like I said, a flyer to press releases, to um interviews, to um you know, materials and supplies. Um so there's a, there's a lot that is going to be happening as soon as we just get this next piece. If that makes sense.
Correct. Bonnie?
Okay, I think you just um the name and the logo and all of that, I was gonna suggest that there be a student, students involved in, you know, our front of our marketing program and all.
Well, we, I don't think we have time, unfortunately, and so that was part of the issue. So the PR and communications teams from both um that Bard uh Simon's Rock and ours are thinking that we just have to get this stuff out and we should kind of brand it to the best of our ability.
All right, so in the future, I hope we, you know, an agree opportunity to start.
Of course.
Um under the ECT working, you said I'm working closely with the SB REA. We still haven't received the MOA.
They decided that uh the they said the SB REA said they didn't need an MOA.
Okay.
I'm not gonna argue about that.
Yeah, answer that quickly.
I just wanna clarify something because um a professor from Bard College at Simon's Rock says that that's the name we're supposed to use. We're not supposed to say Simon's Rock. What are you being?
That is not what Mr. What what the provost said. The provost said, "If you are going to shorten it, um please use Simon's Rock," because, you know, it's a mouthful.
Yeah.
Um but I mean, it will be put. We will say it Bard College at Simon's Rock, but if we shorten it, I had, I said I, I didn't even know. I always referred to it as Simon's Rock. Then I learned about Bard College and I started shortening it that way. That would be incorrect. They would prefer that we say Simon's Rock if we're going to shorten.
Wanted to clarify, so I.
And what's the reasoning there?
I have no idea, but that's what he's.
There's other bars, bar. There's one in River City, there's one.
Yeah.
No, I know, but that's because it's so well-known.
Yeah.
Why would they not want?
I I just going.
You're following the rules.
I, yeah, what I was asked, so.
Okay.
Following the rules is correct.
Right. Next, uh we have posted the new position.
Yep.
Is that, are you looking for community people? Are you looking for intern? Um on the internship, is it?
No, this is a full, this is a position.
So it's, is it our staff, their staff?
This is our staff.
So it will be a person on our staff?
Correct.
Okay, and and the job description?
Everything is posted on school spring and the it's actually go, it went in the eagle because we had five or six positions that we were posting, so we put it together. Um and and it should be.
Shopper's sign?
Wherever they put all of the positions that they just went out with.
Is it full-time?
It is full-time. When I say full-time, it's 100 and or 200 and something, just. Yes.
But the because it's a new position, is it possible that somebody who's working elsewhere, it doesn't have to be a current Mount Everett?
Oh, no, it's open to, it's wide open, yeah.
All right, and um explain that on inflation, explain that. How do you like that? You did it all.
All right, I love it. I love it. Okay, so thank you very much for all of this news.
Yeah.
And thank you for helping make all this happen.
There's a lot of people, but it's awesome.
The bees nest is buzzing around your head every day. So um we go to the director for human instruction and professionals both.
Yes, yes, well, um I'm gonna keep it short. Um much like last time, I will submit my report to Lynette and it'll be posted on the line. Um so I was just going to, last time we met, I told you that we were about to have a um youth mental health summer institute. That actually happened this past week.
I watched.
If, oh, you watched it? So it was in this cafeteria. It was run by Dr. Steve Hoff. We ended up having 28 staff members participate. It was four half-days and uh we received lots of positive feedback and we really hope that next year we can run the program again for those people who were not able to participate this summer because it got such good feedback.
How, how did, where did the 28 come from?
It was opened up to all the staff and it was, we had 32 people RSVP that they were going to come. We had a couple of people that got COVID and couldn't come. So we had 28. It was a mixture of elementary, secondary, paraprofessionals.
Oh, great.
It was a nice split.
And they would pile out of here looking very.
Isn't it?
And the guy, I was watching him dancing around presenting and he seemed like such an engaging person, so.
Oh, he's incredible.
Yeah, so.
Very engaging, very nice guy, so.
Yay.
By all accounts, it was a huge success. And then this week, we were just notified by the Department of Ed that we've been accepted to be inclusion instruction through Universal Design for Learning Academy, which um is a wonderful opportunity for us because it's gonna give us a whole lot of support with our work around universal design for learning. We had already contracted Katie Novak's company to come work with us in the fall and her company is a part of this academy as well. So we're gonna start to get resources from them that we don't have to pay for. So it's a win-win.
Are there other um school districts in the sheer county?
Uh, no, they've been accepted. No, I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
So you can write up something for our newsletters around our towns.
Okay. And uh we also this week, this seems to be the week for staff, found out that we have been accepted to be a part of uh Learning Acceleration Network, which is being run by TNTP and the Department of Ed. TNTP is the um uh group that has done, it's the New Teachers Project Group. It's a nonprofit. They have, the were the people that started with uh multi-tiered systems of support. They support all around the country for improving education. So they were the ones that wrote up the whole accelerated learning plan that we got from the state last year. So this is a network that's going to support us with the work of accelerating learning. So helping us with resources and coaching around analyzing student data and analyzing curriculum to see if it's doing what it needs to do. So we're really, really lucky. The state's supporting us quite a bit with both of these and I'm very grateful that they took us on in both cases.
And how are we making it clear or more clear to the staff what accelerated learning?
Well, we talk about it all the time because it is confusing to people.
Yes.
And um but I think that after the repetition of last year and particularly when um the staff was able to see the growth in students that we did not focus on in mediation, that made it clear what acceleration was, that it's not we're racing kids ahead of things, but that we're making sure that we don't just be stuck in remediation, that we give them what they need in the moment they need so they can access their grade level and people. And so I I think this whole year, really just seeing it happen live in person, helped people to understand what it was and that it does work. I mean, there were definitely some teachers that it, that wasn't what wrapped their head around it. Like, it just doesn't make sense to me. I would go back to the research and the studies that were done around Hurricane Katrina and schools that had done a lot of remediation versus schools that did this accelerated path. Um but I think to believe it, you have to see it, right? You have to see that it did work and I think our scores showed that it did.
Thank you. Well, I don't think it's an accident that we're getting all these grants. I think they're you two or your, the team must be clicking along with some really good work.
I think they're getting recognized in this little corner of the state, so I'm I'm really happy about that.
Yes, yes. Okay, so um Sandy is at a conference and so we'll be hearing from her next. Uh it was requested to put an early college project standing item on our agenda, but since we already.
I covered it because John wasn't able to attend tonight, so we'll just leave it there for next time.
But this way, it will, the public who's listening uh to our meetings will understand the business at the forefront of of our thinking right now. And well, the new business, the August meeting date, I co-opted that in my report, so we don't have go back to that. Uh we don't have unfinished business, so we're down to subcommittee reports. And uh I'm just going to I don't think finances met. Community relations and public school advocacy has sort of made a decision that maybe wanna share with the others.
Yeah, we decided not to do a summer newsletter. Um given our, you know, the time and availability of of most people, so we'll copyright it all one. I think we put it out, um is it beginning of November last time? Yeah.
We could try to do it.
Yeah, I think we should get it earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get it earlier. Um and then, yeah, maybe uh so we can discuss on the next whole meeting, but um well, no, I'll try to send out something to to me uh before the start of school so we can now get the ball rolling on. Because by then we'll have like the numbers for early college and some other summer programs that went on to to make it meeting.
And Dennis, I guess your part, you've taken care of your business?
Yep.
I have a question.
Um.
I have a, yeah, um question is going back to the community relations, public school advocacy. Uh should we be including the questions list that we submitted? Does the board want us to consider doing that?
Um.
That'll take up the whole.
I know.
Yeah, let's see. Yeah.
Saying, let's say, is that something that would be worth, just one of those venues that's often.
We could refer to it in the update on the RSDB.
Yeah, make a link to them or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Definitely, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then uh Bonnie, you wanna bring us up to date on personnel negotiations?
Um well, it, the one thing I was going to speak about is that we had put together an MO, but we don't need it.
We think.
Said they didn't need it.
So congratulations.
And Bill Levington, any update there, Art? And building the graphs, any update there, Art?
No, no updates.
Okay, and uh, superintendent evaluation subcommittee, Jimmy, you want to report on our meeting? To send it?
Jim just said we had a very successful.
Sorry, I, I'm getting used to my new air dates. Yeah, there'll be more information there.
The next meeting, we should have a graph for you. Yeah. I, I, I want to say, just observing that from the last negotiation where. Uh, the whole committee participated because we were in a completely different understanding of that than what was possible. So I, I just think the growth in our relationship with the superintendent over these like three years has been amazing.
I, I have just an update. I got a message from Josh a short while ago that he will be getting back to us next week.
Very good. And the executive ministry review committees, trying to do in August?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And the other subcommittees are not appropriately meeting and then any future agenda items? Um, future agenda items?
Yes, I have the future agenda items. Um, I would like to put attendance. Uh, district school attendance, et cetera. If you saw, I only read the article in the Eagle. We Berkshire, uh, Berkshire Hills have a report that's really not good for overall student attendance. Um.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's on number seventeen as a.
So I'd like to um.
Talking student attendance.
Student attendance, yeah. We know we have the other issues.
Oh, oh, the other one, yeah, seventeen is now moved.
No, I'm talking about what I want.
I know, I know, I'm just seeing, I'm crossing it out.
And then I also would like to bring up something that, you know, we had spoken about early on, maybe this whole issue of merger and I still believe. That we should look at initiatives to be the bigger person in collaboration, cooperation. And look and see, are there any ways we can do certain activities, whether it enables us to have more trips, more um, language initiatives? We know how to do it and I think it's worth discussing um, this issue of collaborating with our neighbors to the north. Um, out of, you know, seeing, I'd like to hear the sense of the, of the school committee on that. And even if there is a new high school, it's at least five years out. So I would like that topic in the next agenda.
You mean new trips, trips with the students?
Yeah, trips with the students, things that we do, the musical ventures, other things. Um, the work that we do with Shakespeare, whatever it is, um, staff to, you know, staff development activities. You know, we know how to do it. So my view is, I don't know what the sense of the overall committee is, but I'd like it on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, I'm going to say the next meeting, oh gosh, I am so sorry. Um, nobody ever talks. Uh, that we have, we may be having an executive session about superintendent. We have a program, the handbook. It fits a weighty meeting. One, this sounds like a good discussion, kind of workshop meeting with administrators and. School committee members talking together about it in, in a.
Yeah, and definitely, I, my initial thing is, I want to have a sense if there's any interest.
Yeah, so.
Otherwise, don't plan a workshop around it.
Right, okay.
And I, well, I also would like to be able to weigh in and maybe even let the administrative team weigh in. You have to remember, there's six of us and we have some incredibly large initiatives and. I don't know how many things that we could or are, are, are really interested in doing in certain ways, so I'd love to.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that's what's.
Be able to say that.
What's the faculty's view, et cetera, but it's just first getting a sense of all, you know, do we feel? There's any benefit in what we, you know, purported to support early on in the process?
All right. So um, I'll attempt to put it on the next meeting. Let me see how much other stuff that is time-sensitive we need to get to. So that we don't end up with a, a long meeting that doesn't have a good discussion because we're tired.
Yeah, it could be three minutes after people, you could say, I'm not interested.
Okay, okay, got it. All right, so uh, I, any other items people want to bring up? I haven't been looking up at the screen well enough to see if your hands are up and I do apologize. Okay, so now we are going to, I'd like somebody to make a motion.
Yeah, like make a motion.
Yeah.
Pursuant to M G L C thirty A and S twenty-one K. Next strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations. Non-Indian personnel, references superintendent schools, post-perimises, non-Canadian meetings, sessions.
Second.
Okay, and I will take a roll call vote. Second, okay, Art?
Yes.
Yeah, that is.
Yes.
Art, uh, this, you can, you don't have to excuse, accuse yourself on this.
I know, I need somebody to send me the link to my phone though. I don't have.
Well, I'm just going to send a link when it's, when it's done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Jeff?
Yeah?
Okay, Jim?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yeah.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
I know what you're saying, Art.
Jane, yes, and Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, so now a link is going to get sent. I think we are going to go.
No, we can stay here.
Stay right here.
Yeah, okay.